Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for September 30th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devois.
Here.
Duffy. James. Deputy Director Lizarra.
Here.
Director Lapur.
Here.
Announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting, and filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Cruz.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart and pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the invocation by Father Patrick Ryan. Father.
Lord, help me to live this day, what's left of it quietly, easily, to lean upon your strength trustfully, restfully, to wait for the unfolding of your will patiently, serenely, to meet others peacefully, joyfully, to face tomorrow confidently and courageously. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Thank you. Take a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Lizarra. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Same. Take approval of proclamation or motion?
Motion, I'll make that motion.
Second. By Cruz. Second by Bartlet.
Devois.
Sorry, Devois. Roll call. Close.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Administrator's report.
Thank you, Director. First, we have a presentation of the New Jersey Chapter of the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Official Scholarship Awards. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Bartlet and Commissioner Devois. And Janice, too, if you could come up, our executive director of the housing agency. Thank you.
Janice is the expert and will do all the talking. Rodney is our newly elected chairman of the Housing Commission.
So, I'm not here right now as the executive director of the housing agency. I am here on behalf of New Jersey NARO, which is a state housing association. As Matt said, it's the New Jersey Chapter, the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. And what we do, aside from training employees of housing authorities throughout the state, is give out scholarships to people who want to further their education and reach their goals. It's one of the favorite things, I think, that I like about the association, and I've been serving on it for 12 years. And in my opinion, we give out the best scholarships. They're big scholarships, and whether you're graduating from high school and going to college or later on in life and you want to further your education, we will help you out if we can. And the scholarships are flexible also. They're made out to the recipient so they can spend it on computers, tuition, whatever they need. So that's a nice fact about the scholarship also. And before I call the recipients up, I just would like to thank my staff members that are here, Maria Geraldo and Clarissa Manjares, because without them they're always working diligently to make sure our residents apply for these opportunities. And without them, they wouldn't even be applying, so we wouldn't be here tonight. So thank you for that. So I'm pleased to announce two Passaic County residents won a scholarship this year from New Jersey NARO. And the first one I'll call up is Doria Hurtis. Run up, Dorian. So Doria works full-time at the Superior Court in Essex County in the Criminal Division. And while she's doing that, she's also attending Berkeley College. And she's expecting to graduate with her associate's degree in December of 2025, Criminal Justice, right? After that, she plans on pursuing her bachelor's degree. And while doing all this, she's also raising three children. And Doria has won a $1,500 scholarship, and it is renewable next year also, so she can reapply and get 1,500 more next year. So congratulations to you, Doria, and we wish you the best on the rest of your journey. Would you like to say a prayer?
Of course. Yes. Say it, baby. Hi, I'm Doria Hurtis. I would like to thank Clarissa, the director, and Maria very much, because they're always emailing me and updating me on stuff that's going on that we can apply for. And they've been my cheerleaders since the beginning, and just like I cheer my children on, which I pushed them through to vascular sonography, my daughter and my son's HVAC, and now a new chapter with my younger one with high school. And this is just me trying to accomplish what I wanted to do since they were born. So I think this is just a very great organization, and I would like to thank NJ NARO for this opportunity.
Congratulations.
This doesn't fit in the ATM.
Thank you, everyone.
Director, next we have our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. I'm going to clap for that. I'll turn that over to Commissioner Cruz to run this program. Commissioner?
Thank you all. Before we begin, I will ask everyone to please turn their attention to the video screens for a brief introduction video.
What is National Hispanic Heritage Month? National Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration in the United States honoring the history, contributions, and achievements of Hispanic Americans. Unlike celebrations such as Black History Month or Pride Month, National Hispanic Heritage Month does not correspond to one of the 12 months. Instead, the celebration lasts from September 15th to October 15th, a period of time chosen to include the Independence Days of numerous Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, Mexico, and Chile. The month also overlaps with Dia de la Raza, a Latin American holiday that replaces Columbus Day to celebrate those of indigenous and European heritage. Initially, National Hispanic Heritage Month was much shorter. In 1968, Congress passed a bill authorizing the president to declare the week of September 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Week. Almost two decades later, Representative Esteban Torres proposed a new resolution to extend the celebration to a full month in 1987. Although that bill did not leave committee, a similar one was passed soon after, leading to the first celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in 1989. Since the celebration's inception, the United States' Hispanic population has grown rapidly from 9.1 million Hispanic Americans in 1970 to approximately 62.5 million in 2021. Notable Hispanic Americans such as San Luis Oaxaca and Roberto Clemente have made important contributions to politics, sports, culture, and other areas. Today, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated with festivals, art shows, community gatherings, and more to commemorate the achievements of Hispanic Americans throughout the country's history.
All right, once again, good evening, everybody. Bienvenidos a todos. We are known to be loud, but you guys are not that loud. So how's everybody doing tonight? Good, good. On behalf of the Passaic County Board of Commissioners, it is my honor to welcome you to this year's Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. As a proud Latino and son of this community, this celebration is deeply personal. It is a reminder of our roots, our struggles, and the incredible progress that our community has made, as we gather this evening at a time when voices and contributions of Hispanics and Latinos across this country are more important than ever. In this current political climate, we too often use the word division and negativity to dominate the headlines, but our community continues to show the true meaning of resilience, unity, and hope. We are not just a growing population, we are the growing force shaping the future of our country, county, state, and our nation. This, moments like this make me think of the incredible Dolores Huerta, one of the greatest Latina leaders of our time. She co-founded the United Farm Workers alongside Cesar Chavez, and through her courage and activism, she gave voice to workers who were far too long invisible. Dolores has spent her life fighting for dignity, justice, and opportunity, not just for Latinos but for all people. Her famous words, "Si se puede," have become a rallying cry across generations, reminding us that when we unite, we organize, we believe that anything is possible. So that same spirit is alive here in Passaic County. Tonight, we are proud to recognize a remarkable group of honorees who, like Dolores, dedicate themselves to lifting up others. They are leaders, innovators, and role models who inspire us to prove that our community is not defined by barriers but by doors that we open for the next generation. So tonight, as we celebrate our heritage, let us be inspired, let us remember that our culture is not something that we just celebrate this month, but it's something that we live with pride every day. Together, we are building a stronger Passaic County, a more united New Jersey, and a brighter future for all. Thank you. So, we are going to begin our program with our first honoree, and she is going first because she is on duty and barring any catastrophe out there, she's going to hang out with us as long as she can. So allow me to call up Ashley Boogie Sanchez. That's you. And Ashley and I and her family go way back, we're not going to tell all those stories, but this proud moment here of significance, Ashley is the first female to ever serve on the rescue squad for the Patterson Fire Department. So it is my honor to read this proclamation into the record, whereas the county of Passaic and the state of New Jersey and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, this Board of County Commissioners finds it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Ashley B. Sanchez. B is for Boogie, by the way. Ashley Sanchez, a proud female Hispanic American of Puerto Rican descent, was born and raised in the city of Patterson, New Jersey, where she has been a dedicated member of the community for 34 years. Her roots trace back to Puerto Rico, where her mother's parents hailing from Camui, Puerto Rico, and her father's parents from Manati further enrich her deep connection to her Hispanic heritage and culture. Ashley began her education at Dale Avenue School, continued on to School Number Three and School 27, where she graduated. And in 2009, she is a proud graduate of our county technical high school, PCTI, demonstrating a lifelong commitment to the academic and personal achievements. Ashley began serving the city of Patterson as a constable, embodying the values of civic responsibility and public safety from an early age. In 2019, she joined Patterson's Bravest, the Patterson Fire Department, as a firefighter and EMT, and through her dedication, courage, and excellence, she became the first female ever to be assigned to the Patterson Fire Department Elite Rescue Unit. Some of them are here, so let's give them a round of applause as well. Whereas Ashley is only one of nine female firefighters in the entire department, making her not only a trailblazer but a symbol of progress, inclusion, and representation in a traditionally male-dominated profession. Ashley is a certified urban search and rescue specialist with advanced certifications in trench rescue, ropes, rigging, and structural collapse, making her an invaluable asset to the emergency response and rescue operations. Ashley serves as a role model to young women, Latinas, and all who strive to serve their community with honor, professionalism, and bravery. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic, who publicly honors and recognizes Ashley B. Sanchez for her many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to Passaic County Hispanic and Latin communities, and therefore, let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Ashley all health, happiness, and continued success. Congratulations. We also have, for all of the honorees, special recognitions from our Passaic County surrogate, Zoila Casanova, and our Madam Danielle Ireland Imhoff, our county clerk. Thank you, ladies, for that. So Ashley, the mic is yours.
So I wasn't all prepared for this, but thank you, guys. I appreciate being honored today. Thank you to my family for being here to support me. Also, my sister, it's her birthday today, she still showed up. And then also to my rescue squad back there, thank you, guys. My captain, he's brought me here. He's one of the main reasons why I became rescue. He made me guide through a lot of different things, but that's it. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
You guys can come up for a photo. Family, come up for a picture, a group picture, and the rescue squad as well, if you guys want to join in. My colleagues. Thank you. We, as always, we do have food and refreshments downstairs in the lobby for those of you who need to leave a little earlier, but we'll continue on with the program. At this time, I'll call up my colleagues, Commissioner Sandy Lizarra.
So, I have the honor of presenting this proclamation to somebody who so richly deserves it. If you know AJ, you know that he puts his heart and soul into the work he does with veterans, and he will help any person that walks his way, because that's the kind of guy he is. AJ, I have certificates here also. So this is AJ. Now, we have certificates from our surrogate, Zoila Casanova, and for our, from our clerk, Danielle Ireland Imhoff. Both those offices, the county clerk, no, yeah, the clerk, and Zoila's offices, surrogate, among many other offices, put in a lot of work so that they can help veterans. But this is a team thing that we do here, because there's not one person that can stand up and say, yeah, I don't like veterans. We love veterans, right? We do. And AJ's one of the best. So AJ, if you just, I'm going to read this, and you're going to recognize a lot of things I'm going to say. Whereas the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2025, through October 15th, 2025, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Ariel Jacob Luna, also known as AJ. Anyway, so whereas AJ is a Brooklyn native of Dominican and Argentine descent who has dedicated more than 20 years to serving our nation and its veterans with his work, touching thousands of lives through military service, higher education, and government leadership. And whereas AJ began his military journey in 2000 with the U.S. Army, serving at Fort Gordon in South Korea and Fort Bragg, and later deploying to Iraq with the New York National Guard as part of Operation Iraqi Freedom. I could tell you more, but I don't want to take away AJ's story. Anyway, AJ, after his military service, earned a bachelor's degree from Brooklyn College and a master's degree in administrative science from Fairleigh Dickinson University, and used his education to develop national models for veteran support at New York City College of Technology and Fairleigh Dickinson University, helping hundreds of veterans achieve academic success and prepare for meaningful careers. Whereas AJ in 2015 was appointed Director of Veteran Services for Burton County, where under his leadership, the county achieved national recognition in 2016 for effectively ending veteran homelessness. How amazing is that? Well, I'm certainly glad we got you here in Passaic County, because you belong here with us, providing housing assistance to over 425 veterans and securing jobs of more than 150 others. Whereas AJ, with his contributions, has earned him national recognition, including the Homeless Veterans Outreach Award from the New Jersey American Legion in 2017, the selection as VA's Veteran of the Day in 2018, and the Hispanic Star Changemakers Award at the United Nations Headquarters in 2023. Wow, AJ didn't tell me any of that. AJ continues to lead with compassion and purpose, founding the New Jersey SOS Veterans Stakeholders Group, leading mental health and suicide prevention efforts across New Jersey, and now managing the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, which has already helped over 500 veterans move from homelessness to stable living since early 2024. Whereas AJ remains dedicated not only to his professional mission but also to his role as a husband to Siobhan Murray Luna and a father to their daughters, Mariah and Alexandra, also known as Little AJ. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes AJ for his many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latin communities, and let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes AJ health, happiness, and continued success.
Commissioner, what a month for Passaic County. It's been incredible. You know, with 9/11, and last week, we had the Veterans Athletic United Memorial at Rifle Camp Park. We had suicide awareness yesterday at Passaic County Public Safety. Anybody that knows what we do and our partners, like constantly trying to give back, right? I'm very grateful for the partnership with Passaic County, right? And I belong to everybody. My mom's a proud Passaic County resident, so I'm Passaic County. I just want to say, you know, I truly appreciate this, because I know, and I hope I could speak for everybody in the room, we all know what that struggle feels like, right? But something about us, we always think it could get better. And I think that's really helped me in developing who I am, doing the work that I do. I have a lot of, been very fortunate to have a lot of great people in my life. I got Dave Pearson from Catholic Charities, won me back. And Yahia Padilla, who I also work with, and she's a VSO here in Passaic County. And my wonderful family, I tell people all the time, you know, Dominican, Argentine, what a mix. I know. I tell people, my father loved my mother, right? And my mother was a minister in Long Island for about 25 years, so that's where I get my patience from. All this stuff comes from my dad, right? Which is a good mix. And I'm also very happy that my daughter is here to see this, because she's always asking, Daddy, what do you do? And we brought her to the Stand Down, an event that we do for homeless veterans at PCTI, right, which is the second time. And I'm just very grateful and honored to be able to be part of a community that not only gives back, but we don't give up, and we make sure that everybody, doesn't matter what you are, you're in this great country, we're going to try to, we're going to try to help you out. And again, you know, it's, I'm a very, very enthusiastic optimist, so anytime you tell me that it can't be done, I always try to figure out a way to get it done. And I know that with what we've been able to do here in Passaic County the last month has been incredible. Definitely want to talk to you about your veterans in Pompton Lakes, right? Because we want to see how we can help out with that. But, folks, I mean, we have a lot to be grateful for. So, thank you all, and Passaic County Commissioners, I appreciate your time.
You're next.
I know, I read the, I have a program. Why? Oh.
All right, to present our next honoree, my colleague Commissioner Rodney DeVor.
Para presentar la próxima proclamación, mi colega, el comisionado Rodney DeVor. Thank you, thank you, thank you. No, in all seriousness, you know, people have, you know, since I've been elected or since January, people have asked me, what do you like about the job? What do you like about being commissioned or commissioner? Meeting people that's on the program today is what I like about being a commissioner. Because we get to see people working hard for Passaic County. Years, decades. And when we get to meet them, we say, hey, you know what? We're representing them, let's honor them. And the people that are on this program have been working very hard and we've been connected. Ms. Cologne, 32 years, I mean, hardworking. Ashley, for a former Bulldog, PCTI. All right. AJ, Veteran Services, who I connected with, great. And this next young lady, Jessica, who I had the privilege of meeting with my colleague partner Sandy Lazara. And we went to CUMAC and immediately meeting her, I fell in love with her. Her energy was infectious. Her style, her work ethics was crazy. I said to someone, if you ever met Jessica, you would walk into a room, no money destituted. She would pitch you something. By the time you left her, you going out to rob somebody just to make sure her plan comes to fruition. That's the kind of person you have today. So Jessica, come on up. You rock, girl.
This is awesome.
All right.
My mom is extra nervous, so.
No, 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 I got to me, mom. So very good. And you're a good friend. So, the Board of County Commissioners, County of Passaic, whereas the County of Passaic, the state of New Jersey and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2025 through October 15th, 2025. And in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Jessica Padilla. Padilla Gonzalez. I'm learning my Spanish, I'm getting my tongue right. All right, and whereas Jessica Gonzalez is a shining example of such leadership rooted in the value passed down from Puerto Rican parents, hard work, compassion, service, and importance of giving back. And Jessica grew up in the Washington Heights where she was inspired by her father, who ran a small neighborhood meat market that always found a way to help those in need, and by her mother, hey, mom, who showed her what it means to be strong, independent Latina. And whereas Jessica went to earn a bachelor's degree in sociology and social work from the College of St. Elizabeth and a master's degree in public administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University. And whereas Jessica, as just 29 years old, became Executive Director of the Housing Partner, I mean, your age is there, don't blame me. At the age of 29 years of old, became Executive Director of the Housing Partnership for Morris County, helping families achieve homeownership and financial stability. And whereas Jessica, since 2023, has served as a CEO of CUMAC, one of New Jersey's largest anti-hunger organizations, leading vital programs that provide food and support services to thousands of families in need each year. Whereas Jessica continues to share her time and experience through volunteering work and nonprofit leadership, helping to build stronger, more connected communities across the state. And whereas Jessica is also a proud wife to her high school sweetheart and the mother of two amazing teenage daughters, God bless you, continuing to lead by example and inspire the next generation to serve others with purpose and passion. And now therefore be able to claim that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes Jessica Gonzalez for her many years of work and work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latina communities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board wishes Jessica Gonzalez health, happiness, and continued success. God bless. Look at it, look at it, absorb it, absorb it, absorb it.
Oh my God. Thank you, thank you. I am, I think this is the most nervous I've ever been because my mom is in the room. Hey, mom! So I want to say thank you so much to the County Commissioners and the county for recognizing me here in this beautiful honor. I also have to give a big shout out to Arti, who's in the room back there. She was the first person to welcome me with open arms here. And I feel like we've come together and dreamed big and get things done whenever we can. So I really do appreciate you. This is really a tribute to my parents, specifically my mom, like I mentioned, for dealing with me during my teenage years when I was crazy. But she never, ever, ever told me I couldn't do something. So I have the age of when I became the Executive Director because at 29, I was the youngest ED in a network of over 250 organizations. And I immediately knew what it felt like to be the only person in the room and being doubted. And what that did for me was really encourage me and push me as far as I could. And I've never given up because of that. And then for my dad, who's no longer here, he really was the person that showed me that community is all we have and that no matter where I am in life, I always have to give back and make sure that I support those around us and from my community. My daughters are not here today because they are working. Like, you know, teenagers need to start doing because they're expensive. And my husband is also not here because he's watching the kids. But they are my rock. They understand and support me when I'm working late and doing this work. And then to my homegirl who surprised me today, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And like everybody said, it is really about the community that we surround ourselves with. And I will not be attempting to talk Spanish right now, but I will try. And then for CUMAC, that's an organization that is near and dear to my heart. We are here, we are serving, we are trying to be innovative and making sure that no neighbor goes hungry in Passaic County. So I'm gonna say it loud and proud. If you need support or you know someone that is in need of food, please feel free to reach out to us because we will find a way to serve and make sure that every family in New Jersey has access to healthy and nutritious food. But thank you guys so much.
How have we been doing so far with this fantastic lineup of honorees? And then there was one. Before I call up our next honoree, I'm just gonna ask you guys one more time to please turn your attention to the video screens for a special message.
Love you, cheer.
Bonnie, congratulations.
Look at that.
These are all of the flowers that are coming your way. Thank you so much. Thank you, you're an amazing daughter. I hope you have a fabulous day and a fabulous rest of your month. Karen, I love you.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Haces, we're so happy you're being recognized today. Your hard work and dedication has paid off. Yovela's family are so proud of you and love you very much. Congratulations.
Love you.
Love you.
Congratulations, mom. So sorry I couldn't be there to celebrate with you, but I'm so, so, so happy of this great accomplishment. Your fruits of your labor are finally here. And I hope that you are accepting them with open arms because you truly deserve them. Thank you for being such a great role model for all of your hard work. And in spite of always being loyal and always being there for your job, you always still put us first. So I really, really appreciate the role model of a hard worker and of a mother that you've been for us. Please continue to be you with your big heart and continue to be great. I love you, see you soon.
I'm sorry, Lottie, Mark Anthony wasn't available. Oh, man. How do we go on from there? You ready? All right, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, our next honoree, Lottie Colon. So when we were putting this program together, you know, we kind of go through a couple of different checklists and thought processes on who we honor. You know, we had a phenomenal lineup of honorees today with all particular significance to this program. And, you know, I said to the girls and to Lou in the office, I said, let's pick an employee of the county that has created such an impact that's immeasurable. And I think that over 30 years of service to this county is significant enough for you to deserve this honor. So. Whereas the County of Passaic, state of New Jersey and the United States are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th. In recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, this board deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Laring, Lottie Colon. Lottie. Yeah. It's Lottie. That's it? Lottie was born on June 3rd. We won't say the year. On June 3rd, in the coastal town of Fajardo, Puerto Rico. At the age of seven, she came to the United States. And in July of 1984, that was the year I was born. I'm just saying, just saying. She settled here in Patterson, New Jersey, a city that would become the backdrop of her inspiring journey in public service. She attended School 24 from 3rd through 8th grade and later went on to Passaic County Technical Institute, majoring in business administration. During her senior year at PCTI, the co-op program became her pivotal door-opening opportunity. Out of the five hopeful candidates, Lottie was selected after an interview with Lorraine Ibrahim and Becky Zayas from the Passaic County Adjusters Office. From '94 to '98, she served in the County Adjusters Office with diligence and heart, always willing to lend a hand, assisting other departments whenever needed. And in 1998, she officially joined the County Council's Office, where she has remained a cornerstone of that department for over 27 years. Since then, Lottie has continuously grown, recently earning her paralegal certificate from Passaic County Community College in 2022. What began as a part-time keyboarding clerk position has evolved into a lifelong career rooted in service, growth, and leadership. Lottie's greatest legacy, of course, is her family, where she has nurtured them with love and pride. Lottie's dedication has not only shaped her career, but also inspired her children. Her daughter, Sharlyn, who once waited outside of her first job interview, is now a thriving professional salsa dancer and a human resources manager at the Hyatt Hotels. She was the last person in that video. A fellow graduate of PCTI as well, Sharlyn began her education at PCC and went on to earn her degree from Montclair State University. Her son, Michael Pacheco, who's here, also followed in her footsteps by also attending PCTI and PCC, reflecting that their values, that they were raised with effort, ambition, and purpose. Lottie's beloved fiance, I'm gonna just say Tito. Yeah, Tito. You have a thing with Titos. Tito Roja, Tito Reyes, I know, I get it. Tito is a fellow lifelong resident of Passaic County and a proud Puerto Rican. Together, their story is like a parranda, filled with music, joy, and deep connection. She is also a caring daughter, loving sibling to two sisters and one brother, a proud aunt, a devoted godmother. Each of them carry a piece in her heart and their accomplishments mirror her own values and dedication and resiliences. Lottie loves cooking, nostalgic meals, rich with sofrito that brings everyone to the table, dancing salsa with joy, singing karaoke, camping with her family, and cheering for her beloved New York Mets.
Okay, what'd you say?
Hear what nobody says.
When's their game, Lottie? Is it soon or?
Lottie, much of who Lottie is can be traced today with her matriarchs, her mother, Irma Valentin, and her grandmother, Justina Lebrón. Two women who have loved and lessened still bloom within her like Puerto Ricans' national flower, la flor de maga. Now therefore let it be proclaimed by this board that it publicly honors and recognizes Lottie Colon for her many years of work and service that it publicly honors and recognizes Lottie Colon for her many years of work and service to Passaic County and her generous spirit and the light that she brings to all that she knows. Let it further be proclaimed that this board wishes her health, happiness, and continued success. Congratulations.
I wasn't sure if I was able to say. Hello, all. Good evening, commissioners, distinguished guests, colleagues, and community members. Bienvenidos a todo a la celebración del medel erencia y pana. I stand before you today deeply honored and incredibly humbled to receive this recognition for thirty-two years of service. First and foremost, I want to thank the commissioners for this tribute. Thank you all. For your acknowledgement, your acknowledgement means more than you know. Serving the county has been one of the greatest achievements in my life, and I am proud of the work we've accomplished together. I am proudly, profoundly honored to receive this recognition. I can't even see, sorry. And extend my deepest thanks to all who have contributed to this moment. I can't see. Leave it for me. I can't see.
Oh, you can't see.
Can't.
Is it the, the tier?
Yeah.
You want me to read?
Yeah.
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
All right. Here we go.
I'm right here.
This distinction is not solely contributed to this moment, but it is a reflection of the individual effort, but rather a testament to the unwavering support, guidance, and encouragement I have been fortunate to receive from all of you. To my family, gracias, gracias por ser mi fundación. Your love, patience, and unwavering support have carried me through all these years, and I am forever grateful.
Hey, let me say this part.
All right, here we go.
She ain't care about y'all. She cares about.
No, no, I have to, I have to. To my previous boss, County Administrator Matthew Jordan. I want to thank you for all your support, encouraging me to do my my paralegal certificate. We appreciate it. To my boss, thank you so much for all your support, all you do. Appreciate it. All your support, encouraging me, encouraging me to do better in what I do. I will forever be grateful for all your support. I also want to thank my former boss, Michael Glovan, for working together for twenty-two years. Thank you for all you did, all you teach me. Everything I learned from you, I greatly appreciate it. To my coworkers, past and present, you've been more than colleagues, you've been teammates, mentors, and friends. I've learned from each of you, and I am proud of the work we've done together. To my friends, thank you for keeping me grounded, for cheering me on, and for reminding me to keep laughing and keep my smile and be happy. Thank you all for trusting me, challenging me, and inspiring me. You've made these past thirty-two years meaningful, and I am honored to have created a career in Passaic County. Gracias a todos por confiar en mí e inspirarme. Ha sido un honor servir al condado de Passaic por los últimos treinta y dos años de mi vida. I remain humble by this honor and aspire to continue striving towards excellence and continue serving the county of Passaic for another thirty-two years. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Thank you with gratitude and respect. Thank you all for everything.
Family and friends, join us for a photo, please.
All right, Lottie.
Let's just give it up for all of our honorees one more time. As I said earlier, there are there is food and refreshments downstairs in the lobby. My colleagues and I will continue on with our meeting, which should not be long at all. And we'll be joining you guys down there, but if you have to step out, enjoy the food. But thank you guys all for coming, and we got the Super Bowl, so that's all that matters. If you know, you know.
All right, Commissioner Cruz, thank you for that program. That was wonderful. Congratulations to all the honorees. Next, I'm gonna turn things over to Commissioner Bartlet for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing ovarian cancer awareness month. Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you very much, Matt. This will be quick because the folks I that is this being presented to are not able to join us tonight. But this is the second year that we've paused in September, which ends in just a few hours, to recognize ovarian cancer awareness month. And I just want to read this proclamation under the record. Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of death among women, and the American Cancer Society estimates each year approximately nineteen thousand six hundred eighty women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and twelve thousand seven hundred forty individuals will die from this disease nationwide, including five hundred ninety new cases and three hundred forty deaths in New Jersey. And whereas in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about one in eighty-seven. And whereas due to vague symptoms and the lack of reliable early detection tests, most women are not diagnosed until stage three or later, when the cancer has already begun to spread to the lymph nodes and outside of the pelvis. And whereas although the five-year survival rate for stage-one ovarian cancer is over ninety percent, only fifteen percent of ovarian cancers are diagnosed at this early stage, and the five-year survival rate for late-stage ovarian cancer is below thirty percent. And whereas while a mammogram can detect breast cancer and a pap smear can detect cervical cancer, there's no reliable early detection test for ovarian cancer. And whereas women's lives can be saved through increased public awareness of ovarian cancer and its risk factors, signs, and symptoms. And whereas our most recent data, the total number of cases of ovarian cancer in Passaic County, New Jersey, is one hundred and sixty-seven women, and the mortality rate is ninety women between the years twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, the most recent data available. And whereas this month, the county of Passaic joins all those who are battling ovarian cancer, those who've lost their lives to the disease, their loved ones, and our state's many dedicated healthcare workers in spreading awareness, committing to public education, and embracing hope for better diagnoses, treatments, and a cure. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we hereby proclaim September as ovarian cancer awareness month in the county of Passaic, New Jersey, and be it further proclaimed that this board encourages everyone to observe ovarian cancer awareness month and support the cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our county and our nation. Signed by all of us.
You know, thank you, Commissioner Bartlet. I'm actually gonna ask you to stay back down. And Commissioner DeVor, we have our second scholarship winner. So Janice, if you could come back up and thank you.
Circling back to New Jersey Narrow Scholarship. Jaquasia, would you like to come up here? Jaquasia Pryor, our second recipient of the scholarship. So while raising a family, Jaquasia is also employed at the behavior, as a behavior technician. And she's pursuing a degree in a Bachelor of Science in Psychology with a concentration in Applied Behavioral Analysis. And she's expected to graduate in two thousand twenty-seven. All this is helping children who are on the autism spectrum. And her vision is to open a behavioral therapy center where she can help the children and their families. She won the three thousand dollar scholarship, which is also renewable next year, so you can actually be eligible for six thousand dollars. So congratulations. We wish you the best on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Um, I was not prepared, but I'm truly grateful to be here and honored. I have to come after those great speeches. But, um, I feel good today for being in the room with a lot of people that have made such a huge difference in everyday life. And I like to say that it's not easy deciding to go back to school and deciding what career you would like to pursue. But this career has found me, and I'm truly grateful for that, and it gives me first purpose. So I'd like to thank Clarissa, and I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to thank Maria and the commissioners as well, and everyone at New Jersey Narrow, the founders, for having me. Thank you.
I think the commissioners also have a certificate.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
And Director, that's all I have for this evening. Go Yankees.
Thank you. No communications. I'm sorry. Commissioner Bartlet, you want the, ever report?
Yes. Thank you, Director. In a few hours, start that again. Thank you, Director. In a few hours, the political party that controls the White House, the U.S. Senate, and the House of Representatives will shut down the federal government. A lot of debates in Washington can seep far away and abstract, but everyone needs to understand how this shutdown will cause real and immediate hardships here in New Jersey. Active-duty military families as close by as Picatinny Arsenal, including some of our own constituents, will stop getting paid. Federal workers at our Great Falls National Historical Park and the federal building here in Patterson will be furloughed or even fired, as the administration has threatened. Furloughs at the TSA and Customs will cause travel delays at our region's airports. Passaic County veterans who've been waiting months for an appointment at the VA might have those appointments canceled or delayed. Federally-funded medical research, what's left of it, at the universities and medical schools in our area could be stalled, affecting not only employees, but also patients. A government shutdown would cause a direct reduction in the nation's GDP, about one-tenth of one percent per week, estimates Ernst &amp; Young, potentially costing our economy billions at a time when so many families are struggling just to afford their basic needs. And for what? The path to keeping the government open is also about affordability. Congressional Democrats are simply asking to keep two current policies, continuing financial support for families who purchase health insurance on the Affordable Care Act exchanges, and continuing current funding levels of Medicaid by delaying the Medicaid cuts in the Republicans' big, beautiful bill. Here's what's at stake and why Democrats are fighting for the American people. Costs for twenty-two million Americans are set to skyrocket by an average of seventy-five percent when Republicans refuse extended health premium tax credits. The average family of four here in Passaic County that buys coverage on the exchange will see their costs go up by more than twelve hundred dollars per month. This is in addition to the fifteen million Americans who are going to lose healthcare thanks to the Republicans' Billionaire's First Budget Bill, including as many as three hundred eighty thousand people in New Jersey. In Passaic County, this is gonna, the Medicaid cuts are going to reduce the number of eligible residents while increasing the administrative burden on intake and case management staff, resulting in longer processing times and higher caseloads. And it'll shift millions of dollars in additional costs onto county taxpayers. Except the partisan Republicans in Washington, nobody wants these cuts. The vast majority of Americans, including more than half of Republicans and almost all the rest of us, oppose the Medicaid and ACA cuts. Our representatives are right to stand up against those plans. What's wrong is those Washington lawmakers who think holding a gun to the head of the American economy is the way to score political points or distract from all the other outrages of this administration. House Speaker Mike Johnson sent everyone home last week with no plan to return before tonight's deadline. It's time for cooler heads to prevail because the cost of the shutdown will hit all of us and none more than our neediest neighbors. Thank you, Director.
I'll take a motion to open the public portion.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by DeVor, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
James. I'm sorry, Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Yes, anyone in the public wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name and address, and remember, you have three minutes.
Should turn the podium around.
Hi, my name is Michael Glovan. I live at eighty-nine Hemlock Road, Pompton Lake, New Jersey. I will make this very quick. I wanted to thank all of you for honoring Lottie tonight. Very well deserved, and she's done yeoman service for the County Council's Office. As many of you know, I was a longtime employee of the County Council's Office and worked here for many years. During twelve of those years, both Pat Laporte and Terry Duffy were commissioners slash freeholders. And I'm not gonna be here at the end of the year, so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank them publicly for the support that they showed to me over the course of my later career and to wish them both very well in retirement. So, thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Michael. Good luck.
Terry's not here, but perhaps you could pass that on to him. So thank you for that opportunity and for the opportunity to be here tonight to see Lottie on. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Motion made by Cruz to close, second by DeVor. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Yes, consent agenda. County Council has told me there's no late starters, no need for executive session. So is any commissioner want to vote separately on any one on the consent? Okay. I'll take a motion for L one to L sixty.
Still moved.
Motion made by DeVor.
Second.
Second by Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Yes. Under New Business Guarantee Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven.
Director, if I could, before the board votes, last year, the legislature changed the law now allowing boards of education to borrow money directly through county improvement authorities. The Little Falls Board of Education was the first school board to make an application to our improvement authority. This guarantee ordinance is for approximately forty-five million dollars to fund various school-related improvements. As far as the protections for the county, it's no effect on our net debt. It won't affect our borrowing capacity, and it's a very safe transaction as the Little Falls Board of Ed is a taxing authority like we are. So I think we're gonna start seeing more of these types of applications where school districts are gonna take advantage of their ability to now borrow through our improvement authority. And I think it's a nice tool that this board can give to investment. para la inversión en mejorar nuestras instalaciones escolares.
Bien. Bien, lo siento.
¿A la nota? Voy a leer el ejecutivo.
Sí.
Garantía de ordenes 2025-07. Una orden de ordenes del County de Pasay, Nueva Jersey autorizando la garantía del pago de los fondos y los intereses no exceder 44,898,000 el total de fondos de principal de la garantía de leasing de la renta. El Project de la Ciudad de Little Falls de la Educción serie 2025, emitido por la Cámara... por la Cámara de mejora del County de Pasay.
Bien, voy a hacer un motion para aprobar la garantía de ordenes 2025-07. Primero, leyendo.
Segundo.
Motion made by Bartlett, second by Cruz. Roll call.
Comisioner Bartlett.
Sí.
Cruz.
Sí.
Devois.
Sí.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Sí.
Director Lapore.
Sí. ¿Quieres un motion sobre el agenda de personal?
Haceré el motion.
Motion made by Cruz, second by Bartlett, roll call.
Comisioner Bartlett.
Sí.
Cruz.
Sí.
Devois.
Sí.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Sí.
Director Lapore.
Sí. ¿Quieres un motion sobre los presupuestos?
Hacer el presupuesto.
Motion made by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
Comisioner Bartlett, Cruz.
Sí.
Devois.
Sí.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Sí.
Director Lapore.
Sí. Voy a hacer un motion para adjuntar.
Todas. Segundo.
Motion made by Devois, second by Cruz, roll call.
Comisioner Bartlett.
Sí.
Cruz.
Sí.
Devois.
Sí.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Sí.
Director Lapore.
Sí. Buena comida, todos.